Texas County Commission Workstation, October 7th, 2019 to order. Row call, Mr. Manick?
Mr. Rich, present. Mr. Venable?
Present.
Ms. Gilbert?
Present.
Mr. Seuss?
Present.
Chairman also present.
We have a forum, we'll have our prayer of Mr. Porter and our pledge of Mr. Manick.
Lord God our Father, we're blessed, we look around us and we see the blessings each and every day. We're thankful for this rain. Thankful that it will nourish the ground and things will grow. We're thankful for all the things that you give us and all the blessings you give us. Thank you for this commission and others that serve the public in a public way, so we're thankful for them. God, we pray that you be with our country, heal us, help us to be more unified and less farther apart. Be with us tonight as we discuss matters involving this county. I pray that discernment and wisdom, patience and strength will be prevailed. Watch over us all, we got this, in Christ's name.
Amen.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we approve the agenda of the meeting.
I'm making a motion for a second.
Got a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye. We have no awards presentation. First be the discussion items. Number one be the birthday policy. This year, since we're in a budget deficit, I'd like the commission to consider giving employees their birthday as a holiday, that it wouldn't cause any additional cost to the county.
Just for this prayer here?
No, we'll be...
Would they be required to take it home on their birthday? Their birthday's on a Saturday?
No.
If it's within 10 days of their birthday?
Yeah.
Or is it Friday?
The way I thought would do is they just, as long as they took it in the month of their birthday, case it falls on a weekend, and it's approved by their department, just so as long as it's not shorthanded and caused a problem.
I'm not against them having one as a birthday, but if there's something that come up that we could, maybe get a bonus or a pay raise, I feel like we need to work those dollars into that, and we don't have to do it every year.
Thank you. Anybody else got any suggestions? Everybody good with it?
Anything on the agenda, what on this one?
Be the 28th. Perfect, we'll put that on the 28th meeting. Next, we can row 17, Geotech Report and Update. Mr. Campbell?
Thank you Chairman, Commissioners. You should find in your packet, I mean, your packet of tape report, that's the final Geotech report that I would promise, and it was available, it was available last week. We had a few slides prepared and had issues, as you recall probably. So I just want to talk a little bit about, that's a lot of information there, and I emailed you that stuff also, but I'm going to kind of pull out some nuts and bolts and talk a little bit about the findings, the recommendations, and kind of some of our thoughts too, and then where we go, where we go next. So before we get started, just orientation here on the slides we're going to look at and the way some of these slides will be in that presentation, most of these all are, except the picture I inserted. So toward the back, you'll find this slide, and it's just a photo of the damage area, but the orientation is important on the slides that'll be next. So we are down slope looking north, and left will be upslope, right will be downslope, okay? Both of the pictures are from the same direction, downslope looking up, and then upslope left, downslope right. Boring hole spots that are indicated there, that's the same boring holes that were on the previous slide in those locations, and tick marks for those boring holes indicate rock contact or auger refusal. So you'll see a tick mark, and where that, where that black line extends past the tick mark, that's actually a rock core. So two of the holes, there's a 10-foot extension of rock coring in some of the holes. Okay, now let's talk about, let's talk about colors. Now, we're still, we're still, left is downhill, right is uphill, top is upslope, bottom is And then boring holes, one through five, basically, but five's not, you know, five's not in line with the others. Is everybody, everybody oriented? Okay, here we go. That's the same path, right? So we're just looking in the same, the same orientation as those yellow lines is this. The black lines that are in that are these red boring holes there. Make sense? Okay. All right, so this is a slide I'm going to use to talk about their results, and they do a lot better job describing their results than what they encounter in that report that you have, but I'm going to give you my condensed, what I took out of it and trying to, trying to understand this. So left from rock, boring hole one, eight and a half to 21-foot fat clay, 21-foot to 36-foot highly weathered shale, refusal, auger refusal at 36 feet. This is also, also you see that extension of the black line, that's the last tick mark, that indicates a rock core. Very poor, of fair quality limestone with mud seams indicated. Okay, boring two, 3 foot to 18 foot fat clay, auger refusal at 18 and a half feet. Later red, much later in July, groundwater level of 15.4 feet. Okay, boring three, zero to 20 feet, fat clay or clay, auger refusal at 20 feet, groundwater at time of drilling, eight and a half feet deep, shallow groundwater. Boring four, 10 foot to 24 foot fat clay, 26 to 38 feet shale, refusal, auger refusal at 38 feet, rock core in this location as indicated on the mound. Very poor, of fair quality limestone, groundwater at time of drilling, nine feet. So, okay, you just said high groundwater, boring three and boring four, all right, let's see where that's at. So my pointer is on, it was on the wall, but not on the TV, so I can't point at it. But if I could point at it, I'd point at three and four that are out there close together. Y'all see that, right? Okay, let's talk about some of these colors. Starting with, starting with the resistivity. So that's ERT is Electro-Resistivity Tomography, and basically, the way I understand that, they do a better job describing it, but they put electric currents into the ground spaced ever so often apart, and what they're looking at as resistivity from that material is below them. So it's, it's kind of an indication of density, I guess, but really, it can be a little misleading because you're talking about electrical things that can be skewed by air and water, okay? So the resistivity is, is kind of a density, but requires the MASW as really a verification in the way I picture this. The MSW is a multi-channel analysis of surface, surface waves? Am I on that wrong? I think surface waves. So, so basically, it is the way I understand that, it's on my graph. So the ground, the ground, and energy sources introduced to the ground, and it has the phones or the readers spread out in a certain area, and I picture that as density. So these waves penetrate, they measure that resonation and return, and then there's an inversion process to where they can kind of achieve a density. So the graph on the right, the very top one is the resistivity that goes with the ERT. The bottom is the shear wave velocity, which goes with the MSW, okay? So let's look at the top one and talk about those colors. The top would indicate the better material or better, better indicating colors, harder material, more sound material, more constructable material. So that's going to be your dry sands, gravel, churn, dry lean clays, or bedrock, limestone, okay? So on the right, and in the top graph and the third graph, where we see the pink, red, darker purple, that shoot tetanus, that's either rock or, or an air-filled void, okay? So that's the caveat. So it could be, we could be seeing bedrock on that purple color, or we could be seeing a hole, a cavity.
A ground cave, basically.
Basically. So we'd kind of have to use the MSW as, and our core and subsurface information, as a way to calibrate and kind of verify some of the readings that you're seeing on each other here. Okay, so then, let's talk about the lower section of that scale. So on the scale on the top right on the resistivity, on the blue, so the blues are going to be your less desirable material, shells, fat clay, more soils, or water-filled voids, okay? So both of those are kind of not good, right? So you can pretty much bet that if it's blue, green, not so much yellow, but the blue and green, that you've either got highly weathered shells, clays, something really moist, or it's completely full of water, okay? All right. I'm going to talk a little more about those colors, and then we'll get into their graphs and what, kind of what we can make of it. So the next scale down below that, really, if you're, if you're looking at the MSAW is the second and the bottom, and you're thinking bad to good, that scale that's over there, the bottom scale, you would flip it over. You'd flip it over like their graphs. So the purple, the dark purple, we'd think of as bedrock, okay? And the blues, excuse me, blues greens, you would think of as loose material. So I'm, we're thinking density, when we look at MSW, we're thinking density. So we're thinking purple bedrock, the other end of that being loose material. So for the scale to be like their graphs, you would take that thing and flip it over, if that makes sense. That's kind of the way I have a picture. But the yellow, the yellow's kind of the primary indicator there. That's your, that's your turning point to where, hey, I'm getting the rock. And some of the, some of the core and information will prove that. Matter of fact, you're looking at boring four there on the bottom graph to the right, hole to the right, you can see how the black line extends down into that. So we, you know, that's where we took the rock core. So that yellow, no, damn, they were in the, they were in the limestone rock, if that makes sense. The yellow, the yellow line, the little yellow line is kind of the breaking point from weathered shell, a little more from weathered shell, the really rock there. All right, we got the colors, we think? Am I good?
Yes.
Okay, so looking at the top left, you can see there that we've got that graph and the third graph, they break into layers for us. It's dotted lines and it's really small on the screen, but you might can see it in your handouts. They have layer one, layer two, layer three. So layer two is kind of some bubbles there on either side of the yellow dot looking at the top graph. There's a bubble for layer two, and then layer three, they just kind of call below that. Layer one is really above that. It's more defined in the third graph down, ERT one, where you have layer one, layer two, layer three. Layer one is basically residual clay or just a field. Layer two is highly weathered shale, consistent with more water content, and in one of your graphs in that report is the moisture content at the different levels, and it's indicative in that second layer, where you see a major jump up in moisture content of the soils that were gathered. In layer three, they're calling rock, basically, you know, for the purpose of this is rock. Okay, so at the very top one, left moving right, then we have, you see how the blue is surrounding a yellow something there? And we said that yellow something is somewhere between fat clays and desirable material, probably, probably rock, is my guess, in that point. And then you have an inclusion there of that, that blue color where boring one was. And boring one, as a reminder, is, you know, 21 feet deep, we're in the fat clay, 21 to 36 is that shale. So they're saying that highly weathered shale is more moisture content. And then you see like a jump up in the yell and the reds, and it goes from there, but we know in boring two, they hit rock at the top of that, okay? So what I get from that is that there is, there is a void, there's a void there, maybe not a void, clay field area, pinnacle, pinnacle bedrock, something indicative of solution or water that went through there, and they, they reference this in their findings. And then, you know, pretty much the rest of that is rock, you know, that, that red section is rock, is the way I take that. And you can kind of see that in the MSW path below that. It's not as detailed, but you can see how it dips to the left and then kind of rises up in the area where that larger presence of the bedrock could exist, or larger, larger, you know, the substantial material, but it's substantial enough that they had auger refusal on boring two, so I feel like, you know, that's going to be, that's going to be rock, basically. Okay, so the MSW below that is just kind of a confirmation of density, right? We're thinking the lighter blues are looser, the greens still looser yet, and then the purple, we're in the, you know, we're in the substantial bedrock. Next path down, so this was, this was like upslope of everything, right? Those first two, ERT two path was at the very top, MSW two was just a little below that. So that's the first two, and then the last, the last path is both tests are basically together, but they're off the shoulder, pretty much. So we're kind of straddling the failure. Okay, you can see how it's fairly consistent in, in ERT one, to where you have layer one, layer two, and layer three, and the area concerned is essentially layer two. Highly weathered shale with more water present there, and these are where boring three and four were present. So three, we have groundwater eight and a half feet, and you can see that blue inclusion, how it reaches up around what would be rock, I'm assuming, kind of a pinnacle of rock or a boulder in the place, and then water, clay, clay filled water rising up on each side of that. So boring four, same thing, nine foot encounter of groundwater, and you can see the clay dip into some of that. And then this is, this is kind of confirmed with the MSW, you can see how your rock, if that's rock on the right, jumps up, and the MSW density rises to kind of anywhere. But basically, you have that layer, the highly weathered shale layer, layer two, in the dotted line, dotted around, that's the layer of concern. So I'll go into kind of what, what they're saying from that and talk a little, kind of what we think, but are there any questions about this before we move on?
You're going to next sheet down?
Yeah, I'm just kind of talking results. This is, this is, I'm looking at sheet eight, nine, and 10 of that. It talks about groundwater influences, and they obviously want to rule out slope stability. So slope stability, when we talk about, you've heard me say, we go out there and we look at this site, we don't see indicators of traditional slide. When we brought the Geotech guys in to look at this, I'm talking Geo, Hazard, and the Issue Guys, they look at this and they say, this is not a slide. The guy, K's on this county, there's car activity going on here, we don't know what's going on, but we got to see below, we need some information from below the ground. So they first want to look at slopes, not first, but they want to rule out slope stability as well. So slope stability, basically, we're talking driving forces and resistive forces, right? So water's in there somewhere, maybe, there's a layer that's secret water, but basically, the weight of the slope itself is more than the cohesion of the soil can hold, so we've got traditional slope, slope failure. We got a slope, a slide period. So in that, in those cores, they can take the soil properties that they gather, they can go out and do trixel shear testing, and they can determine, okay, what angle would this dirt stay there on its own, or if it's totally saturated, et cetera, okay? So slope stability is one of the things that has to be evaluated on something like this.
And this in this?
Uh, no, I'm still in this big thick report.
I know, what I'm just saying is, what you're talking about is described in this three.
Uh, yeah, yeah, I'm in, I'm on page eight of, yeah, I'm on page eight, basically, I'll be on page eight of that, the S and M report.
Okay.
But yes, sir. So slope stability is, was one of the testing factors, groundwater influences. So obviously, once they pour, they can put meters in to monitor groundwater levels, and according to what they found, the primary mechanism for failure, although not readily apparent, it does appear that groundwater is a primary contributing factor, so it's always water, right? Where limited substances have been observed for several years at the roadway, the large substance over not being incurred after normally heavy rains in February, and they, they believe that the heavy rains increase the groundwater levels, decreasing the stability of the slope, induce piping of the clay, subgrade material. So essentially, through solution piping or elevated groundwater levels up in the area of substandard soils, a poor material, and then the withdrawal of that is what we're seeing as a contributing factor to that drawdown or that sinking.
So basically, they're saying it's a sinkhole?
Essentially like a sinkhole, but I don't think we've, unless that dark purple's a void, I don't think we've identified a hole necessarily. But, but yeah, basically, it's, it's sinking.
They're saying the material is migrating into the material below it, instead of, instead of having a, a bowl to the toe or slip or slide, it's actually penetrating down and silting down into smaller voids, not a large void.
Yes, and elevated groundwater could be taking material on and popping it out of there, you know? Even though not apparent on the front slope to where it's daylighting, you know, who knows where it's going or how deep it's going, but yes. Okay, the rock recovered during the drill is just a limestone based on recovery, so we talked about poor, fair to poor, and some mud seams in that. All of that are indicative of solution. So limestone, so the bedrock part of this, where you would think is good, limestone has carbonate components of it, right? And so that water, the carbonate components of limestone are soluble to the water, especially extended water over and over can, you know, contribute to the solution and piping and open up throats in that to where, I think you're going through. Page nine now. High groundwater levels and possible car activity based on their analysis. So they're recommending a mitigation of the failure area in the county for this. Subsurface stabilization, removal and replacement of materials in the failure zone, controlled drainage of surface water, instability of temporary cut slopes. So we have full material there. So another factor of this is when we get into the repairer and we're doing temporary cut slopes to make the repair, stability of those slopes when we're cutting into this becomes a factor, right, because of the, the angle at which that slope was standing on itself. So they're, they're recommending that improvement on the order of 15 feet deep. Part of that, part of that subsurface stabilization, when we excavate this failed area out, we look at mitigation techniques to handle all this water that's in there, then, then we're also going to be looking at, because we're just getting, we're just getting little peeks here, right? We're getting tad, tads of information to try to still guess really what's under there, what you would find when you, when you sink a bucket into this thing. So they're saying that when you, when you excavate into this comprised of failure soils, then you may kind of think of, you may kind of throw between boulders where this thing's going, you're going to get to a layer that's completely saturated, obviously, eight and a half, nine foot deep, depending on where the groundwater level is, and when you find these throats, then you may have to do some techniques depending on what you find. So, you know, inverted filters, concrete plugs, compaction grouting, maybe, things such as that, when you encounter voids or areas where materials leak in, just like Mr. Reynolds talking about. Okay, I'm winding down, I promise. All right, let's, let's move along. Is there any questions on this before we, before we go? All right, so one of their, one of their solutions, this is an underground detail. So this would, this would apply, basically, and what they've done too is, they don't, they don't get into a lot of information about the repair techniques, they know we're looking at, we're going to be looking at specialty folks that will propose solutions for this, but they, they throw out some details on basically that high groundwater mitigation, okay? So if, if you were in this temporary cut slope and you're experiencing groundwater influx from the lower section, then this would be a possibility as a way to mitigate that water. And basically, you have a stabilized field, which I see that being all limestone and free drainage anyway, quite honestly. But then the temporary excavation subgrade is, is basically a free drainage aggregate of 67 in this one, and then filter fabric or non-oakid textile, you know, border around it, it works wrapped. Those would be, that would be like the whole bottom of this, and then there would be discharges at periodic intermittent spaces throughout the whole field. Your cut slope face here, it don't show anything on that, it would just be dirt if you didn't have, or in situ material if you didn't have any water infiltration come out of your cut slope. Same thing essentially here, except it accounts for water at your cut slope. You see the natural slope, and then the perforated pipe in the bottom, and then the same thing, basically a French drain or wrap 67 stone, filter fabric around it as a trench, that would also be intermittently spaced, and that face would be continuous. So then it, this detail shows finger drains, and then a half over at daylight. Then you'll notice that three to one, so that three to one is flared for soil filled slope. So if we're using any existing material and trying to improve that, rebuild that slope with that, then they're not, they don't have a lot of confidence in that standing on the steep angle at all. They even mentioned retaining wall face or reinforced soil slope, so that would be like a wrap, fabric wrap. Okay, I know that was kind of a lot, a lot of information, more than you wanted, Megan. You have the full Geotech report, so dig into that if you're interested, contact us with questions, if I can help or, or get, get in touch with S and M. This bench has been great to work with. I can try my best to get you any answers.
Did they leave any like pest wells or anything, where we can check the groundwater at any time during the year?
Their pedometer's present. They're on two and, two and five, or two, three, four, and five? I'll have to look back to make sure, but yes, they are, they are present.
Some of the more unconventional like pens and stuff that you had mentioned, does this report say or lend itself toward those still being viable options, or does it make it more pronounced that it needs to be a traditional dig out and replace repair? I mean, like you mentioned, the throat or a void or, you know, we didn't pinpoint any of those, and then get lucky enough to drill into one or whatever, so where do we go from here? Do we still solicit beds and alternative fixes, or are we going to gear ourselves back more toward a traditional fix?
Yeah, that's a good question. I think it's going to be a combination of both. I think the order of 15 feet, that kind of, when I looked at this, it brought a concern to me, because we're still in that highly weathered shale, right? We're not going to bedrock with, with the distance and depth that they're talking about. So my questions were, okay, we've got this newly constructed free draining field, we're sitting on top of highly weathered shale, and we know we have a spring that's below that for water. So they don't have a concern with layer two supporting what they're talking about, but in my opinion, what I think we'll see is a proposed repair, I don't, I don't know about soil nails and rock balls, I don't see that, that's really more traditional slide, if you have some movement or some stability issues, or it's projected from soil data. But what I think we'll see in the area, I can't point, okay, but I would be pointing at, that very top ERT panel, where you see the void of the blue. I think, I don't, I don't think there's going to be a lot of confidence in a newly constructed field setting on that, okay? So I think we may, we may be, we may see some non-traditional fixes there in the form of maybe a gratic column. And, and when they talk about this stabilized field, I think you're probably going to see a GCS constructed field, something with layers to where you're actually bridging over a lot of this. So your whole field acts as, acts as a continuous structure, and then there's probably some gratic columns in there. And I still think we'll see maybe- Uh, and I still think we'll see maybe a little something more than just free drainage aggregate to address the water, depending on what's encountered when we get in that, you know what I mean? So if we, if during excavation, if this contractor's in there excavating, and we encounter an area that's really important to it, then I think that'll be addressed via a spring box or something on a larger magnitude than just a, just a French drain, free drain and something. I, I'll look for the field to come by, all aggregate, all free drainage, where we eliminate any possibility to the forces on the pressure head. Um, but I think in those areas, there's enough there with the geotechnical data that it's going to warrant some, some deeper foundation improvements.
Did they say anything in this report anytime that it possibly could get more rain and sink more, or are they pretty comfortable and it's, it's pretty well stable?
It's never going to stay there. I mean, it hasn't stayed there since the road's been there. You, you, what we've seen are results of elevated groundwater that's, over the course of time, has been doing the same thing for every.
Just got to get the water out, too.
Yeah.
This is going to just kind of be a mystery until you get out there and put what you want to take twice under, under.
A lot, a lot of that would be for us, I think with this information in the hands of folks that do this every day, I, I think they could, they could probably arrive at a competent repair, um, and probably include items if they encounter something that even unforeseen that they would be able to mitigate.
So if we propose, or solicit proposals on this, Jonathan, and then we try to send it to the government, I mean, like we have to send the proposal in, we reimbursed the board and then approve it, is that how it works?
Okay, uh, good question. It leads into the next part, so I'll go there if we're ready. Uh, any more nuts and bolts stuff on dirt and rocks, and we'll switch over to where we're headed. All right, so to answer your question, hopefully, this is a bid package. You don't have a copy of this, you do have a copy of this, okay? This is both drafts, it's what we've been crunching on and working on and taking pieces from here, putting pieces from there. This is kind of a typical bid package that we use for state funded projects, 10 or 43, for example, the thing you agree, it's all the same format. And, and part of these, one of these items is where you can get into the particulars or some details on how you're going to let stuff, and, um, and I want to talk about that. That's the one you do have a copy of, although it is draft. If there's no objections, it's still, like, to legal review, at least by concept. And then to answer your question, Ms. Gilbert, we would pull this, we would put this in the hands of our state partners, okay? They would take FH, they're FHWA overseers, and hopefully we can all have a, a conversation about how we're doing this, um, the logistics of this, and if they can give us a soft thumbs up or not on before we proceed. But let me show you what the framework is of this. So, um, I want to talk a little bit about, about this mainly because it's so different from a typical low dollar bid, something that we put out there, okay? In comparison to having a defined project that has X amount of stone, concrete, steel, there's a lot of unknowns here, right? I think we can, we could all agree on that. So there's some general plan of design requirements, there's some general information here about what we want. And basically, you know, we want that slope failure repair done, we want it designed by you, and we want a plan on how to do it, and we want you to have all the tools to come in and do it, okay? There's no pre-bid conference in this, we're not going to sit down and tell you all the things we expect and how you ought to bid on it and all the process, because really a lot of it's up to you. This is a design bill, okay? Uh, it's not the first time we've done this, that bill, but it's not mainstream, something you see every day. Um, so in lieu of a pre-bid conference, we are requiring that they basically attest that they have examined the site of work, all the Geotech data, as well as the DOT specs that will be followed for the work, okay? We get into some design criteria on page two where we talk generally about design, because remember, they're, they're obviously designing it, they're responsible for the means, method, and materials. Um, but we do tell them that, you know, the high, the high groundwater levels, possible car activity, the mitigation will need to account for subsurface stabilization, removal and replacement of materials in the failure zone, and controlled drainage of the subsurface water, as well as stability of temporary cut slopes, which is basically, we're following the Geotech report on their recommendations on all that, okay? A factor of safety of repaired slope stability as determined by the designer and ratio, a ratio analysis of resisting forces divided by driving forces will be a component of evaluation criteria. Component of the evaluate, evaluation criteria is identified throughout here on particular items, and it'll make more sense as we go through this, but I just wanted to highlight that. Talks about how they do their plans and what we need. And then it gets into how we're going to handle this as far as competitive sealed proposals, okay? This part I kind of want to read because it's different. Due to methods not appropriate for sealed bidding, okay? It's not appropriate for sealed bidding because we don't have definitive something that you can bid on. Sealed competitive proposals will be received at Jackson County Public Works until there's a date there that's arbitrary, we've kind of stuck in. Don't, don't get hung up on that. Proposals must be received by the deadline date established, no public opening will be held. What? You always have to open bids publicly, right? No public opening will be held, no proposal shall be handled so as to permit disclosure of the identity of any offerer or the contents of any proposal to competing offers during the process of discussion. A register of proposals shall be prepared as part of the contract file and shall contain the name of each offer, a number of modifications received at any, and a description sufficient to identify the item offered. The register of proposals shall be opened for public inspection only after contract award. As provided this request for proposal, discussion, negotiations may be conducted with responsible offers who submit proposals determined to be reasonably susceptible of being selected for award. To assure full understanding of and conformance to solicitation requirements, all qualified responsible offers shall be given fair and equal treatment with respect to any opportunity for discussion and revision of proposals, and such revisions may be permitted after submissions and prior to award for the purposes of obtaining best and final offer. In conducting discussions, there shall be no disclosure of the identity of competing offers or any information derived from proposals submitted by competing offers. If only one proposal responses received, then the award recommendation shall be to the single offerer if the offerer meets our requirements. Evaluation factors, they're relative important and the grading scale are identified in table below. Each submittal will be evaluated to determine the ability of each offer to provide the required services. The following weight criteria will be used to evaluate the proposals. Okay, so we're saying, you got to go out there and look at this. You deal with this every day, design builder, you're going to show us your fix, your factor of safety, your proposed design, your worksite footprint slash disturbance, that's essential because we have 80-foot a needed right away. We've had, we've got a soft okay from our, from our below grade landowner, but obviously he wants to know, hey, how much of my timber are you about to destroy? How much of my ground are you going to get up here on? He says, you know, we're, we're, I'm probably okay with the construction easement, but I really need to know how much you're talking about. Well, we'd love to tell you how much we're talking about, but we don't know what the solution looks like, right? So, so you see the predicament here, and that's also why worksite footprint slash disturbance is a criteria for evaluation. So, um, it's also why discussion is necessary. So you can submit us a plan and a design, and we can go with that. But if we go to the landowner and he says, absolutely not, you're going to have to pay me for construction easement, or you're going to have to buy my right of way, then, okay, designer builders, uh, how much does it cost if we narrow it in and you temporarily stabilize cut slopes, okay? If that makes sense. Schedule, county force participation, cost proposal, cost is obviously important, right? Factor of safety. So factor of safety does a couple of things. It shows us that they're designing it and they're not just throwing a low dollar number on it, okay? They've got to use software like Slide or some of the other comparable software to actually run the analysis on this stuff to show us a factor of safety, so that we know that it's a design.